Uh, welcome everyone to this virtual town hall with Claremont Unified School District Board of Prestige Area Five candidate Cheryl Fiallo. I am so pleased to be here in this conversation. My name is Pallana Tiller and I'm particularly pleased as a Claremonter, a longtime learning science and learning design professional, and a supporter of Cheryl's, um, to moderate this conversation with with you because um, I've noted that there's a real availability and a presence that you've uh made in your campaign to be um, you know, clear and present and transparent to the community and available to us. And so I wanted to be part of this because I was really excited to to kind of articulate and highlight that aspect of who you seem to be and how you're running this race and to ask you a number of questions that have been on my mind, some questions that I fielded from the community. Um, and so I'm looking forward to a really rich conversation with you tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you. For folks who don't know Cheryl, I'm going to offer a really brief introduction here before I move into those questions uh that I've gathered for her. But please do note that we very warmly welcome your questions throughout this webinar. Uh, and you have a Q and A function that's visible at the bottom of the Zoom screens. And I'll be sure to integrate your questions into our conversation. So if you see me pausing to look away, it's because I'm trying to make sense of the question and I will then try to integrate it into our conversation. Similarly, if you have a question about that, you can you can put that question into the Q and A function and we will be monitoring that to uh make sure we catch it. So Cheryl Fiallo has had a rich professional life that includes a number of years as a chemistry and biology teacher, including here at Claremont High School. And nearly a decade as a district administrator overseeing technology initiatives and teacher professional development here at CUSD. Cheryl has also got a long track record of service in the community, such as serving on the Chaparral Elementary School Site Council, on the Dairy Council of California, and as a board member of the Claremont Educational Foundation. And in her personal life, Ms. Fiallo is the mom of two CUSD students and an avid outdoors woman with a deep love for California's landscape. So without further delay, thank you, thank you again Cheryl for continuing to make yourself available to our community as we consider this very important selection of a new school board member.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, it it's really been a treat to get around and get to meet and greets. Do uh online office hours, do a virtual town hall, just anything to get out there. Tell a little bit of my story, but more importantly, to listen. I've learned a lot from the community. I've gotten a lot of feedback. I've become aware of issues that um are are present or percolating that I that I wasn't aware of. So uh it's been a really good experience. Um, and I think it's going to make me a fantastic board member to be hearing this um, hearing all of this feedback and 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 figuring out what the community needs. So thank you.
I I really appreciate you recognizing that you've been doing a lot of listening because it's how we learn, right?
Yeah.
You have all this, you know, intimate experience from inside of the district, but um not many of us get to go door to door to talk to our neighbors and parents and the young people who are in our schools.
All sixteen hundred of them.
So I'm pleased that you're taking yourself on this learning tour through the campaign. With that, with that all said, uh, I'd love to ask you just my first kind of thirty-five thousand foot question um about your your reason for running. What inspired you to run for school board at this time?
Oh, what inspired me? Um, that's an interesting choice of word is inspired. And so I'll tell a story with that. Uh, so you already mentioned that I was a teacher at Claremont High School. I taught chemistry and biology. Um, and I started in two thousand one uh teaching there. And was in the classroom and had really great supportive, active school board members uh that came into my classroom. And observed my teaching, observed my connection with students. Um, and I really want to put this in perspective, but this is like two thousand one to two thousand six. This is before an iPhone. This is before an iPad, right? Like this is, you know, way back when before social media. And as a science teacher, I I felt like science and technology just just merged together really so beautifully. And so I was doing really innovative things with technology in the classroom. And school board members came in and 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 literally said, I do not understand what you are doing. Uh, but I think there's magic there. Like they had not seen this before. It was really truly innovative and transformative and and students were really engaged and uh we were really pushing, we were, we were uh creating blogs and um doing collaborative documents before Google Docs even existed. So I mean, this was, you know, really game changing technology. And so these school board members came in and just said, I've never seen this. How do we help you grow? Like, I think there's a lot of potential here. And that's always a like, that story has just stayed with me, that feeling of I see you, I recognize you, and how do I help you? How am I of service to you? Um, that has always stayed with me. So you just said, you know, the word inspire. That was inspiring. That was game changing for my career and ultimately my life and sent me on a pathway to get a a master's degree in educational technology. And then eventually, you know, I had the support of the school board and the superintendent and then to eventually have, you know, one period release uh at a time to to start to kind of really build what became our educational technology program throughout the district, little bits at a time and and, you know, I had this vision of here's what educational technology can be. And everybody just thought that that is so wild. But I had school board members that thought, okay, we're not there yet, but how do we get there? What are those next steps? And so that was incredibly inspiring. So ultimately, really, why am I running for for the school board? I really want to keep that healthy, high functioning school board that's really focused on student achievement, that's really focused on innovation and those core values and really elevating the educational experience that our students have um across the board. And that's a reputation that Claremont Unified has had. Uh, it's what's drawn students here. It's um, it's it's kind of a core piece of 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 the community. And I really want to be a part of that and continue it. You know, another piece of this of you, why I want to to run, I I feel like a lot of teachers feel like their work is service. It is service to the community. It is service to children. And I very much felt that way as a teacher and then as administrator. And then um, when I left CUSD, really just at the calling of my family to help my family's business, I just knew that education is in my soul. It is in my being. It is the place where I am best equipped to serve my community. And um, I knew that then the next step was for me to become a school board member. Uh, and so began, you know, really thinking that through and discussing it with my family and talking about what that would entail. And and here I am, ready to serve.
Well, we're grateful that you're running. Um, I wanted to uh just kind of note one aspect of what I heard you say around that inspiration, uh which is about the intersection of um the the educators being of service, right? Of service to our communities. But I I really, I really appreciated that you noticed as an instructor that there were these other professionals who are part of the community, right? The school board members who were clear that they were of service to you. And that in that partnership, you together were going to be of service to the students. And I I really appreciate that you sort of that planted a seed in a way. And you've gotten yourself to a point where you're thinking, okay, now I, how might I support those educators? How might I be part of that? Kind of larger structure and apparatus that is about collectively serving our students. Um, so I I just wanted
Right, like the the yeah, the shift in my career really started with this simple question of how can I help? And and then that changed the trajectory of my career with my students. How can I help? And then becoming an administrator and working and doing professional development with teachers. How can I help? What what do you need? How can I reduce barriers? How how can I help you do the things that you need to get done?
Great. Um, so with that all in mind, um, I'm curious to know how you would prioritize then the ways that you're going to need to help. Like, what are the top two to three most critical issues that are facing our school district right now? And then conversely, if you will, uh, and I can follow up with this if we if we need to in a moment. Conversely, how would you describe the ways that we're equipped to respond to those critical needs? What are our strengths and what are the capabilities and the opportunities that we have to respond to these critical issues?
Okay. Well, definitely, I think that we are in a new era of COVID. I I don't think it's left us yet. Um, I think we're just in this next phase of of COVID recovery. We've moved sort of through the pandemic and now we need to rehabilitate ourselves from it in so many different ways. There's been tremendous damage that's that's been done to the educational system as a whole. And and our students are reeling from that. And they're going to be reeling for that for, I think we're going to feel it in education for the next uh at least twelve years as our students that are coming in, um even as uh TK students right now, we're going, we're going to feel that for fourteen years. So I think that pandemic learning loss has been um very uh significant to me that our students are not yet achieving grade level standards and grade level mastery at the level that they were before the pandemic. And so if we look at our English Language Arts, our mathematics, our science, uh, some of those core content areas, uh, our students are are not achieving. Now, we as a district um are are continually performing above state and national averages. That's that's always been the 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 state for Claremont Unified. But we as ourselves, if we hold that metric to ourselves where we were in two thousand nineteen, we're we're just not there. Um, and we're just not close. And so that is is core to me to say that we're we're not back up to where we were. And we've got, we've got some serious work to to do. Another really critical issue is the budget. So uh, we are now facing after after years of um e- extra budget coming in, um, we are facing declining enrollment and decreased state revenue. And then the triple punch is the expiration of many of these COVID uh relief funds that were brought in really to help the, help get through COVID and recover from COVID, but we are not recovered. I don't think any school district is. And so there is still work to be done. And with all all three of those things really impacting the the bottom line of our budget and what resources we're going to be able to provide while still having these great needs of pandemic learning loss, uh, it it's going to be difficult for us.
And how do you, how do you envision um our collective uh strengths in the community and in the district corresponding to those challenges and when some, you know, some opportunities that are, like you stated earlier on, our shared values, our aspirations, our, you know, kind of our reputation, if you will, even just the 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 ways that we have functioned. How do you see those elements that are already in place contributing to um addressing those challenges? And then and then in particular, your own strengths, your own strengths and qualifications. Where do they, where do you picture that uh those elements playing a role in that kind of proactive response to these challenges?
Yeah. Well, I think I'll I'll speak to those two things separately. And maybe if I um go on a tangent, you can bring me back to the question. But I think as a community as a whole, Claremont really values education. Um, I think that's the core from, we have some fantastic uh colleges. You know, rooted right here in the center um of of the city. And there is a very wide support for K twelve education. And so that is is a great strength that we bring in there. Another huge strength is our is our focus on the whole child beyond the academics. Uh, we're really concerned about the social emotional well-being, the cultural well-being, the physical well-being of of students and looking at sort of the whole picture and providing um opportunities for our students. So those are strengths of of the community that that kind of lead into that. Then secondly, you asked about, you know, qualifications for me. So you want to know about my, like my strengths and qualifications?
As you, you know, as you think about yourself as a as a team member of that board, what is, you know, what is it that you can already imagine? Like, I look forward to being able to contribute in this way because this is an aspect of what I know about myself and what I have both experienced and seen in 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 classrooms and in the district.
Yeah. Uh, first and foremost, collaboration. I I am absolutely a collabor collaborator. I do not like to make decisions in isolation. I think that the the impact or the input that we can get from multiple people and multiple perspectives gives us a better outcome from that. And so many times I'll just keep asking clarifying questions or asking, oh, what do you think about this? Or or there's this situation and I'd like some more feedback. And um, so collaboration is a big, big huge piece of that for me. And so that's a piece I'm really looking forward to. I know there are incredibly talented um educators and board members that that are, you know, very passionate about the work that needs to be done um in CUSD and then the work that is currently doing. And so I am really excited to engage in that dialogue. Also knowing that my experience, my perspectives, those are, those are just mine. Um, and those are not reflective of of the entire student population nor of the community. And so getting that input and uh collaborating on on a a a better outcome than any one of us could come up with on our on our own.
I'm interested to go back to the question that you, the topic that you raised a little bit earlier around our budget being a priority. And one of the elements of the budget constraints and the budget challenges that we'll be facing is really rooted in those declining enrollment numbers that we're seeing. Can you help the audience just understand a little bit about how you uh how you understand the problem to be and what might be some of the factors at play with declining enrollments?
Great. So for the audience, if if you're not aware with um how funding of public schools works is that um the district receives funding based upon students in in a charity. It's called average daily attendance. So um funds are only received if a student is 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 present, is enrolled and is present. And so as um fewer students are coming into the district, then fewer fewer dollars are coming into the district. And that is not, uh, declining enrollment is not a problem that only CUSD is facing. The entire state of California is facing this. So uh California as a whole is facing a decrease in population, which is unprecedented as 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 far as I know. So that's very unusual. It has to do with, you know, parts of the cost of living and um, you know, other factors within the state as a whole. And so almost all districts are facing these, this declining enrollment. Claremont Unified uh has mitigated that loss for many years and maintained very steady enrollment with interdistrict transfers. These are students that don't live within uh the CUSD boundaries but attend Claremont Schools um because they've been what's called released from their home district. And what home districts have started doing now is uh turning off that pipeline because they're facing decreased uh enrollment. And that means decreased funding for it for them and their programs as well. They are no longer releasing their students to 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 come to Claremont Schools. And so it's quite a large percentage. It's about twenty-three to twenty-four percent of our students are actually interdistrict transfers that are coming from other districts. And so it's important for us to keep that pipeline open so that we can continue not only to receive revenue, but that we can continue to um provide programs that are large enough and robust enough and a variety of programs and keep those staffed so that the students are are interested in those. That's especially important at our secondary schools where we want to have a lot of course options that are of interest um to our students and have those needs. And you need a large population at at your high schools in order to offer some of these programs and keep them adequately staffed. So yeah, that declining enrollment piece is 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 just we we've got to keep students coming in here. We've got to retain the students that we have.
I I I feel like there's, um, you know, I I I hang out in Trader Joe's and Sprouts and Memorial Park and there's some, sometimes some kind of um not to traffic in hearsay, but there's sometimes some kind of uh you know, whispered down the lane around like, well, kids are fleeing our schools because there there's bullying and mismanagement and and everything that I read and from my professional perspective and being concerned with what's happening in California and elsewhere with regard to education, public education in particular, it strikes me that 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 the issues around demographics and economics are much more at play than um particular, you know, instances of 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 behavior. And I wonder if you would just speak, if you'd humor me, please, just speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's definitely the case. But I definitely think that um campus safety and culture is is paramount to the entire educational environment. So we've been able to attract twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-four percent of our students here because we have very high academics, we have great programs. Uh, we have programs that other school districts are not offering, and we have a very strong um school culture and climate. That is not to say that it's perfect. There 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 are issues that 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 we need to address as a district um and strengthen that. So that's definitely a piece of it. But again, those are not issues, you know, unique to CUSD. They're they're systemic to education as a whole, that that as an educational community that that we need to be addressing.
I'd love to kind of build on that a little bit and and talk a little bit about what you imagine then success looking like. Uh, you know, in your, if you had the magic wand and all the money in the world, um, and you could build a district or be part of a district that was giving to our families, our learners, um, you know, all of what they might need for their futures, what would you um like, what are some of those ingredients that you would like to see come to life?
Oh, my gosh, um, so much. If money were no object, uh, I mean, that would be just just be a dream world. I mean, you talked about success, though, and um I think success is defined differently for every single student. I think it really has to be. I think that overall, the success of a student is really equipping every single student to be happy, healthy, contributing members of a of a changing world. And really that they're equipped to with the tools to persevere, um, to address the changes that they're going to face in their lives. And so in order to do that, you know, we we do really need to keep that focus on the whole child. That i- as well as having academic well-being and 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 focusing on social, emotional, physical, creative you know, cultural aspects of of the student. And you know, if money were no object, it it the the dream, the things you could come up with, oh, my gosh. It would, it would be pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's probably a a sort of unreasonable question to ask when we're we're talking about um public education, but uh I really do appreciate.
Decreased class sizes and, oh, my god, science labs and uh materials and instruments and um arts and I mean, all of it, music and it just so many things.
Yeah, I appreciate you leaning into the 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 part of the question that was really about what would success look like and the idea of um providing young people with access to the kinds of um both experiences, knowledge and tools and capabilities that that then come together to help them be resilient and to be productive and happy. I appreciate that you also included the the word happy. I I I'd like to know what you think in terms of how we might do a better job of intentionally centering student voice. And and really kind of looking at questions of um of agency in learning and how we you know, conceivably could be in conversation with young people about both their rights and their responsibilities as learners and as people who are part of the community. Um, would just love to ha- hear some reflections on on just kind of that area, if you would.
Well, I think it's important for students to have agency. They need to have a self-awareness and be able to self-reflect and be proactive and they need to advocate for themselves. And that needs to start through um every step through their TK through through twelve journey. And so that's really like scaffolded opportunities for them to do that. And so I sort of see this. I'm kind of seeing this question really kind of in in two ways. One of of like board and policy and how that happens. And then um, I can't help but put like my teacher hat on and and think about how I would foster that as an educator in in the classroom. But I think they're kind of different approaches. From from a a board perspective, that that means including students um in the important work and decisions of the district. I I mean, the the school board ultimately is, and and all of the educators are there working for the students to provide opportunities for for them. Um, and so I love that we have student board reps. So that two members, uh, one student from Claremont High School and one student from San Antonio High School um serve on the school board. Uh, and they serve as an advisory role. But I think that that's really important for the board as a whole to listen to what these uh student board members are bringing. Uh, ultimately, their vote um or they're not making a vote, they're just making an advisory vote. Uh, but I think it's really important to listen to that. Um, and I and through all of the school board meetings that that I have attended, part of my favorite part of that is listening to their reports. So they give reports at at each of the board meetings. They're responsible for being a liaison to um to different schools, different elementary schools as well, as well as their um home high school and giving a report back. And I love that piece that that's kind of preparing them, that that's really what a school board member does as well. That school board member is that liaison to the community that needs to be bringing back these these, what's going on, what what's, you know, what's the pulse um of what's happening within the community. And um, I love giving our our students an opportunity to do that. Uh, I also think that as a board member um in CUSD, we've always had the um the norm of putting committees and advisory groups together. So when a board policy is going to be made or revised, quite often, the board will defer and say, let's put a an advisory group together to to gather some more information. Again, be more collaborative, have more voice put in there. And what's important is that every single time, there need to be students on there. And and I've been involved in so many uh committees and advisory groups um throughout my my twenty-three years in Claremont. And I love seeing that they're elementary aged students as well as high school students actively involved in these committees and 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 giving feedback. During my time at at Claremont High School, it also makes me think about when we have um uh our WASC accreditation. And if the audience isn't familiar with WASC, it's the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. It's a certification that that our high schools have to have in order to tell the world that this is um a high quality high school education. This this diploma really matters. And so including students um on those accreditation committees and involved in that process. I'm also uh involved on the school site council you had mentioned. So the school site council is a committee at uh each school site um of elected parents and community members um and elected uh staff members that are going through and making the school plan for student achievement. So this is a a a local school site specific plan that will dig into what is the data at that school site telling us? Um, and then what strategies, what's our goal uh for achievement? Um, and then what strategies are we going to put in place? And it's also important there to again have student input on that, e- especially at the elementary level. Um, and I love getting these reports. Each school will will present their their school plan for student achievement, the SIPSA to to the board, and always bring in students that are so articulate uh and can communicate so well and share such a love and pride of their school. So I think that's 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 pretty amazing.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of build a little bit further onto this question of of voice and student centered learning and just with a pivot, however. One of the things that's uh evident to me is that I I'm fairly certain you will know the numbers better than I do. And maybe our audiences, folks at home will know better than I do. But I'm fairly certain that Claremont is now a majority minority student body, right? We're predominantly students of color and yet our educators and school site leadership are fair less reflective of that demographic and that reality, right? I'm interested to know um how the board and the district talk about this or how you envision that we should be talking about this and um how we intentionally can can um recognize that, you know, if our, if a good number of our students and their families are Spanish speaking or a good number of our families and students are X, how are we reflective of that? Or how are we listening and how are we in taking those realities that don't necessarily? You know, I don't know all the backgrounds of all the folks who are on the school board at present, but I don't believe anybody is uh is of color or or Spanish speaking. I don't know. That I I can be wrong. I'm sure I'm wrong. But my sense is even at the principal level or the, you know, within assistant principals or guidance counselors is that not many of our young young learners are seeing folks in leadership who maybe look like them. I'd love to just kind of engage you in that conversation about voice and uh perspective. and, and thinking about our student population and their voices and how you would, how you'd want to be a, a listener and a learner vis a vis that, that reality and that kind of picture.
Right. So, great question. And no shock, I am not a person of color. And, and I'm aware of that. And I, I mentioned before about being collaborative and bringing multiple people in and also taking a step back and realizing that my experience is not the same as everybody else's experience. So I need to be personally very mindful of that. And, and cautious of that and, and, and so, and garner input. I also have to be very aware of the data. So seventy percent, more than seventy percent of our students are students of color, yet only about fifty-one percent of our, our staff are. So there, there is a disconnect there. And so I think that the district and the school board needs to be aware of that. I think that starts with really looking at our hiring practices, looking at our equity statement is, is now on all of our job postings. It's about involving parents, community members and students on interview panels and having their perspective on that. I think it's about having outreach with local universities that are, that are feeding in interns and feeding in potential applicants and, and looking at their programs and how they're preparing teachers. And I think that it's really about fostering an entire work environment throughout the entire district that really celebrates diversity and welcomes that. And, and part of that is providing professional development for our teachers to understand that the experiences that those students are coming in with are, are not necessarily representative of their own. And that research shows that, that students that can make a connection, like as you had mentioned, that see people that, that, that have, look like them and have had the same experiences of them, or at least can make connections on that, they feel more connected to the classroom. And, and that's a goal. And so we need to, we need to work towards that. And I think that that's where, you know, a school board can hold the superintendent accountable for looking at that data and seeing what progress is being made there. I think it's also interesting, if you look at demographic data of, of Claremont as a whole, of CUSD as a whole, how much it has changed over the last ten years. There is a, a tremendous shift in those demographics. And being aware of that and moving towards that.
Beyond the question of, of, of diversity and representation, which are obviously critical and, and, and I appreciate that you're attuned to the necessity to pay attention to that reality. I'd love to hear about your ideas for how CUSD can continue to be an attractive place to work for high-quality educators. And, and really like, obviously with an eye on representation and diversity, but really, high quality is the point that everybody wants, right? We, we all want high-quality qualified individuals educating our young people and, you know, making sure that we are a, an attractive employer. I think CUSD is the second, employs the second largest part of Claremont besides the colleges, right? And so we're, this town is, is, is full of people who are coming here potentially or staying here potentially through their relationship to being employed by the district. How do we do a great job of, of, of recruiting, attracting, retaining and developing these great educators here in the district? And how can the board and the district be, you know, kind of put each other on the hook for, for doing well about that?
So first and foremost, we have to make CUSD one, an attractive place to work and a realistic place to work. And where I say that with realistic is looking at funding and, and, or excuse me, pay and benefits. So looking at compensation for our teachers. And again, this goes back to my concerns about, about the, the budget and concerns with the budget. And really understanding very well how schools are funded. So not only are schools funded by ADA, so declining populations mean fewer dollars, but also decreased state revenue means the, the smaller the pot, the more mon, the less money that's coming in. And in addition to that, the way that state funding works is that students or a school district is given like a base grant, a base amount of money for an elementary age student and a high school student. Okay, so you receive this, this base grant block of funding. And then beyond that, school districts get supplemental funding. And so this supplemental funding is for low socioeconomic students, English language learners, homeless foster youth. And so those are additional monies that are put in specifically to address the great needs that those populations have. And, and they are great. But when we look at Claremont Unified and look at our data, we are about thirty-three percent socio, socio-economically disadvantaged. That's a lot. I mean, think about that. That's a third of our students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. That's quite a bit. But when we compare that to our neighbors, it's far less. We can look at Upland Unified, our neighbor, that is, I think, probably sixty-seven percent, twice as much. Or Mona Unified, that is ninety-one percent. And so what that means is that those districts are receiving a lot of additional funding from the state that CUSD does not. That means CUSD is, is pretty consistently funded in the lowest twenty-five percent of school districts. Yet, we're, we're in the same pool collecting talent from the, the same geographic area as these other districts. So there becomes a problem of, we're funded here, but we need to maintain salaries and benefits and compensation that, that meets those others, or we're just not going to attract that talent, right? So that is a concern. That's something that I'm very committed to maintaining, that, that we're, we're, we're staying competitive with, with our compensation for teachers. And so that really has to do with attracting and, and also retaining that, that we're competitive there. But then also I think that, that a huge piece too of why, of why a lot of teachers come to Claremont is that you want to work in an environment that you enjoy. You want to enjoy coming to work every day. And that's about our school cultures and our school climate and, and how we support our teachers and want to make this a joyful environment for for our students and, and our faculty and staff that are here. And so that, you know, that's about maintaining that, that kind of culture and celebrating our teachers. Our school board, I think, absolutely needs to maintain recognitions that we're doing for, for our teachers. At every school board meeting, there's some kind of recognition of, of great things that students or teachers are doing. And so we need to, to keep doing that. We also need to be investing in our teachers and providing opportunities for them to grow. So as a board member, I'm, I'm very supportive of, of providing additional training and support for our educators and, and, and establishing a leadership collaborative for them that can help them move up. Should, should they choose to, if they want to get into administration positions, that we're building that pipeline for them and building that capacity. And that they know that they're supported in doing that. And I had another, another idea and it left my mind.
That's okay. It'll come back to you, you know, tomorrow morning. Or just as you're going to bed tonight.
Yeah, two in the morning, I'm gonna wake up, go, there it is.
I do have a couple more questions for you, Cheryl, but I do want to remind our audience that we welcome your questions in the Q and A function, which is at the bottom of your Zoom screen. You can enter your questions there and we'll be able to track those questions and include them as they come in. So please don't be shy. And maybe I'll sit tight to see if anything comes in before I ask my next question, because it's a bit of a doozy. So I'll pause here.
I gotta get ready.
It's, it's, it's a doozy that I know has been on your mind, so it's all good.
Okay, well, I'll take a drink.
In terms of a content area topic. So we have, you know, we have, you, you, you kicked off by saying one of the priorities of, of yours and the real concerns that we have as a district is around learning loss related to post-pandemic kind of malaise that our culture, the world is, is, is dealing with, right? But I know, I know that another piece of this is around the sort of mental health and wellbeing. And yes, you, you pointed to kind of whole student, whole learner care. But I'd love to hear kind of more specifically and pointedly around just the issue of, of mental health and behavior and supports and just kind of where, where you think we need to be and what we can and could be doing better by students around those particular needs.
Yeah, definitely. This is a, a high prior, high priority of mine as well. Without a doubt, COVID brought in a great deal of mental health needs for our students. Students are feeling, or we're dealing with isolation, anxiety, depression. And I think we were seeing those things as society before COVID. And COVID just really exacerbated them. And when our students returned to face-to-face instruction, we, CUSD, was not prepared. And, and I don't say that as a criticism of CUSD. I don't think any school district was prepared. I don't think we as society were prepared. I don't think us as adults were, were prepared to deal for ourselves with the mental health needs. And so this, this great exacerbated real need for mental health services, not only for our students, but for our faculty and staff as well and for our families. There, there's a great need for that. And so the district needs to continue to address those. I know that we have some, some provided supports through, say, CareSalus is one that I don't think that the, the community is, is that aware of, that you can receive these mental health services as, you know, a family member, a student, even staff through CareSalus. And then I think as a board, we need to really strengthen in and get into those community partnerships with like Tri-City Mental Health has, has huge support of mental health services for us. University of Laverne with interns that they're providing NAMI, suicide prevention. There, there are a lot of community partnerships and outreaches that I think that we can strengthen with the board. And then also it goes back to those, you know, budget commitments. And adding in what I feel is the next piece of this is not only the, the mental health supports, but behavioral supports. So I, I have heard loud and clear from parents, from community members and from teachers that the behavioral needs of students are, are extreme right now. And they are impacting the ability of, of students to learn in the classroom. And so that, that has to be addressed. And so from a budgetary perspective, I think that that is incumbent upon the board to address additional positions that, that need to happen there. I'd like to see more what are called registered behavior technicians. These are individuals that are trained at, at school sites that can get in there and intervene with some of these behavioral issues before they become either discipline issues or they escalate into more larger unmet social, emotional needs and really get in there before those escalate. And really doing that work with under some very highly trained mental health professionals, like, like board, board certified behavior analysts, school psychologists, counselors, just really taking all of those pieces that we already have and, and strengthening the way that they, they work together and communicating them to the, to our families and our community. These are the resources that are available. Let's tap into those before they, they are escalating to, 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 you know, bigger problems.
I appreciate that you're, you're also highlighting the ways in which these existing and some necessary services are, are going to be viable to not just our learners, but also their families and, and our faculty and staff. Just a really critical element. I think most people should be more aware if they aren't, right? And I think I'll, I'm gonna try to remember that and share that with folks as I recognize a, a, a need in a, in a place. But I'd love to hear you talk a little bit, and, and this is a question that came into the Q and A from the audience. Talk a little bit, if you would please, about services in particular for students who are on IEPs or 504 plans and the ways that we may, what are we doing well to serve those students? What are we need to do better in order to, to serve students better who have those plans? And, and, you know, what are some thoughts around expanded or improved just operations and policy and delivery of services for, for those learners?
Yeah, yeah. Well, first it's making sure that, that the students are receiving the services that are defined in their IEPs and 504s and that those are being regularly revisited at the school sites, that those student study teams, all of those, all of those supports and everything are in place. And really that the families are engaged in that whole process. And that it's continually reviewed and continually looked at. What, what is the, what are the needs of those students? And, and are those being met? And also, we talked earlier about like agency. And how can we empower our, our students that are on IEPs and 504s, our students with disabilities or learning disabilities? How can we provide them with agency so that they can begin to advocate for themselves? That's the ultimate goal, is that when they leave CUSD, are they equipped with the skills to function in, in, in society and, and to do that well, to do that happily and to do that constructively? And so I, I had this really wonderful conversation with a parent at a meet and greet. I'll just throw this in as, as an example. And she had shared her experience of having gone through Claremont Schools herself and having been on an IEP. And eventually, by the time she graduated Claremont High School, had no services whatsoever. And that was the, the biggest success for her was that her IEP system really worked for her and revisited it every single year to figure out what, you know, what her next piece of her agency needed to be. And, and so how that, that her, her team could strategically pull back some of those supports once she was ready for that. Once she had been equipped with those skills to, you know, to understand her own disability and to move through that. And I just thought that was kind of just a beautiful example. And that's really the whole, the whole goal, is to get students to that, that, that point where they can advocate for themselves and they can that they have what they need.
And, and, and sort of beyond then revisiting the plans that are in place and recognizing that they need to be adhered to and that they can and should be adjusted and with the student at the center of those adjustments as you, as they progress along. What would you, could you point to just some things that you have your eye on in terms of improvements? You know, beyond the obvious monitor and, and have fidelity to the plans. Do you have a sense of where we, we might also have greater opportunity to be investing in, in this learner population?
I think I would need to get more input on that, to see what, what are the barriers right now? And to get feedback from families and from the special education teachers and departments and see where, what are their sticking points and what are the, the hurdles that they're dealing with right now? Before really advising on that.
Good. I do have another question for Cheryl, but again, I want to invite our audience. We're about ten minutes to the top of the hour. So I want to encourage all of you who might have a burning question that you need to ask to drop that into the Q and A and I will incorporate it. But my next question is really very subjective and self-serving, because I'm super biased to the area of preparing young people for life in this not just all college for all and not with the binary of college or career, but with the integrated notion of being future-ready and and, 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 and being resilient for defining and pursuing their passions and their interests post-high school. And so, you know, I know a lot of like, a lot of the, the thinking right now is around how do we, how would we paint the portrait of a graduate of CUSD schools? You know, what is the portrait of graduate for us? And I'd love to just hear a little bit from you about how you think about work-based learning and, and real kind of hands-on career exploration. And, you know, when and how early that can and should be starting in our schools and for young people and, and, and whether you agree that there's, there's an unnecessary binary between college or career. A loaded question that I just totally.
But I was really excited because I was like, you're going to college and career. This is, I love this. So, yeah. Maybe this goes back to where we talked about success. You know, what is the definition of success? And I don't think the definition of success is every kid is going to a four-year college. That just isn't it. That isn't the pathway for every student. And I think that our definition of success is that we provide, we equip kids to figure out and to have the skills that they 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 need to to succeed in these different areas. I do believe that we, as students enter in either Claremont High School or San Antonio High School, when they enter into grade nine, I do believe that we should keep them on this A through G pathway option. And so if the audience isn't familiar with the A through G pathway, A through G are categories of courses that that a student would need to take in order to make them eligible to attend a UC or a Cal State. And so I I don't know what the different categories are. A is probably English Language Arts. You need to have four years and so on. So all of these different categories. And so I do think that we need to start students on that pathway, but I don't think that they all need to finish there. In fact, they all don't. Because they, students need to work with their their families, they need to work with their counselors, they need to work with the community. We need to be providing college and career fairs and opportunities for students to explore different career options to decide, is college the the best option for that? Do I need to stay on this A through G pathway? And then, because it's really hard to get back on that A through G pathway if you get off of it. So I I do, I do believe in starting that that route until there's a conversation with the student and the counselor and the 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 family to say, no, you actually, we we really want to go this direction. Like, look at these great options that that Baldi View ROP is offering for career and 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 technical education. And that that will get students, you know, directly in into gainful employment the the moment that they they graduate. That's a really beautiful thing, not to be straddled with years of 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 student loans and and debt for that. I was very, very pleased to hear a report from Baldi View ROP, the Regional Occupational Program, that provides a lot of career and technical education courses for our students. I was really pleased to hear that Claremont Unified actually has the highest, I don't know if it's per capita, per student percentage rate in the Baldi View program. I think that that's, that says something. That is some data that really informs the board that that our students and our families are very much interested in career technical education. And we we need to keep providing those those options and keeping those those doors open. And so part of those doors open with with repeated opportunities for students to to experience or or learn about different career options. And that can happen through the Career Center. That can happen through Career Fairs. That can can also happen through partnerships with businesses and community leaders within our site. So I'd like to see some of that grow. And and also continuing to 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 foster students' participation in extracurricular, co-curricular activities, arts integration, all of those things. Open up options for our students that are that are beyond that that traditional four-year four-year college track. And also the the support for continuing to add in dual enrollment courses. Where these these are courses at both San Antonio High School and Claremont High School, where students are receiving both college credit and credits for grad, for high school graduation.
And then the the other great thing about, you referred to Baldi View, the there's opportunity for dual enrollment with career tech education as well, right? You could actually have a worldview that is college and career. These things can be happening simultaneously. It doesn't have to be either or. It could actually be both and. And and having a different conversation around those options and those possibilities, I think, would just be a beautiful gift to kind of continue to give our our learners.
And letting students know there is no stigma of one of those over the other. That that they are equally viable options for for students.
Which might involve then letting parents and families know that there's no stigma around. Which is another piece of that puzzle, right? We do have one more question from the audience, which harkens back to something we talked about earlier, which is around the 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 equity and inclusion priority that the district made through the Equity Advisory Committee, including that equity and inclusion priority in the district strategy. The listener, the audience member is interested to know what you'll do to ensure that equity and inclusion remain a core value of the district.
Well, it's one of the four core values. Excellence, innovation, equity, and now I'm forgetting what the fourth one is. But but it's there. And so it's important to note that that those core values and the CUSD strategic plan, which I haven't even talked about tonight, and and that's a big, you know, huge. It's the vision of of the district and it guides the board's work and the evaluation of everything that 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 plan was put together with extensive community input to say that these are the things that we expect of of our public school system, and these are our values. And looking at that CUSD commitment and has six focus areas, and one of those focus areas is equity and access. And that that was, that was a purposeful, strategic point of making equity and access its own focus rather than trying to sprinkle it throughout other priorities, but being very intense and purposeful about it. And also looking at the Equity Action Plan that goes through and puts data to the board, gives data and looks at what of what student populations are participating in these programs that we're talking about? What students are participating in Baldi View ROP? What students are participating in International Baccalaureate? What students are participating in Middle Years Program? And are there barriers there? That the day, the the board has to look at that data and make directives to then the superintendent about making sure that there aren't barriers to students being able to access those programs. And so that Equity Action Plan puts that data in place and and holds some of that accountability to make sure that we we aren't putting those hurdles there for students and that we are giving equitable access to all of our student populations.
Thank you. I'll sit tight to see if we have another question or so.
Sorry, hopefully you'll bring me back if I didn't answer the question.
No, I think, I mean, I think you've made clear that you understand that, you mean on that last question.
Any of the questions.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I I mean, I I feel like I've I've heard you have complete thoughts around the questions that I've asked and those that have come from our audience. So you know, a critical, good, good ability to complete the thoughts. So I would be interested to know, at this point, if there's anything on your mind that you'd want this audience to know. How can we help you? What do you need? What are you most curious to continue learning about? And or what do you want to leave us with tonight?
Well, first of all, I just want to be, I just want to say thank you. Palana, I want to say thank you for your time tonight. And for the questions that you've given me, these are big ones I'm going to be thinking about for for quite some time. And I want to thank everybody that that attended tonight online. Thank you for your time and and that that you're really vested in this. This is a really important decision for our community. And then to everybody that's gonna watch it, watch the recording after the fact. So thank you for your time and I'm appreciative for the opportunity. And really, I I need your vote. Get out there, vote. And because there's big, important work that needs to be done. We've talked about a lot of things today. And I'm ready to get that, ready to do the work, excited to do the work.
Well, we want folks to 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 follow up after tuning in tonight and after listening to the recording with learning more about you at fiello four c u s d dot com. So fiello, F I E L L O, the number four, c u s d dot com. You can also endorse on that site. You can donate on that site. You can volunteer on that site. And you can share it with all your friends and remind them if they live in Trustee Area Five, that they should be really supportive of Cheryl Field's candidacy. And so thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna call it a night and really appreciate your attendance and your great, good questions. Take good care.
All right. Thank you, everybody.